9/11 Media Studios presents The Layover with LaPoah. I'm your host, Marshall McLean. Our guest today is Joe Buscayeno. Joe Buscayeno is an American politician and former police officer. He has served on the Los Angeles City Council as the representative of the 15 districts since 2012. From 2020 to 2021, Buscayeno served as president pro temp of the council. A member of the Democratic Party, Buscayeno is a candidate in the 2022 Los Angeles mayoral election. Buscayeno is a first generation Italian American whose parents immigrated from Italy over 40 years ago. Prior to his election to the city council, Buscayeno served as a police officer for 15 years with the Los Angeles Police Department. Buscayeno has lived in the 15 council district all his life. He and his wife Geraldine, a teacher in the Los Angeles Unified School District, have two children and live in San Pedro. Thanks for joining us for another edition of The Layover with LaPoah. Today's guest is Joe Buscayeno. How you doing today, Joe?
Good, Marshall. It seems like you're excited to be here.
I am excited to be here. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks for having me.
Well, let's jump right into it. So we've got a bunch of questions to get our viewers to really know who Joe is. So let's start with, where were you born?
I was born in San Pedro, in the shadows of the Port of Los Angeles.
Okay. Tell us about your parents.
Yeah, my mom and dad immigrated here from Italy, Sicily to be exact, in the late 60s. And they came to the port because of the fishing industry at the time was booming. 1969, my dad was a commercial fisherman and my mom worked the canneries. So my dad would bring in the catch, unload at the canneries. My mom would skin, can the tuna at the canneries. They would come home smelling like fish and they reminded me and my sisters, that's the smell of money.
Okay. Why did they choose Southern California as opposed to like San Francisco?
Yeah, so my great aunt was already here. They owned a fishing boat and there was tough times in Italy at the time. Poverty and they had to find opportunities and of course, beauty of this country is a country of opportunities. So my great aunt called my mom's parents and said, "Come to San Pedro. There's fish to be caught here. There's money to be made." And sure enough, it was a booming industry. A lot of Italians were already here down at the port and they were successful in that piece, yeah.
Okay. Outstanding. Do you speak any Italian?
Certamente, si, va bene. Tu, tu parli italiano? No.
Nope. No, not even gonna fake it.
Yeah, I'm not gonna fake it. Pizza don't count, okay? Lasagna don't count. Arangini. But yeah, it's, I've learned the language, took it in high school and I still have all, my dad's side is still in Italy today. So they give me an opportunity to get to speak.
Have you been back or have you traveled to Italy since then?
Several times, yes, several times.
So how did their work ethic shape yours?
Well, we were in a household, thankfully, a union household. My parents instilled in me the importance of working hard, of having faith and trust in God and following the law and being a good person. And there were times where I didn't see my dad for days because he had to be out there working the commercial, as a commercial fisherman. And then when commercial fishing subsided, he worked at the bakery, DeCarlos Bakery, which is subsidiary of Hostess at the time. And I just saw him, you know, working overtime, just providing for the family. Well, my mom was a, what do you call it, the home engineer. She was like the stay-at-home mom. Took care of my sisters and I because fishing went down. And it was, you know, the hard, the work ethic and that's instilled in me, the recognizing the fact that nothing comes easy, you just gotta work hard to be successful.
That's a good sentiment that needs to be talked about more these days. What was your first job?
My first job was working the fish market in San Pedro. Yeah. I was a junior in high school and I might end working weekends and saving up. I've always wanted, you know, my dad said, my parents said, "You want a car? You gotta save up for a car." You know, and you just, you go find a job, you gotta pay for insurance.
What was your first car?
It was a 320i, 1980 BMW. It was a...
Better than my first car.
Well, it was, it was like 120,000 miles. It got me around. But we had a friend who was a mechanic in San Pedro and said, "Hey, I got this, interested in picking this up?" And sure enough. But my, my first adult job was working for the city's Recreation and Parks Department.
Of Los Angeles?
Of LA, yeah. It was my own home park, the same park that I was taught how I was coached baseball, I'd played basketball. And I ran the youth sports there, the adult sports leagues, winter and summer camps. It was a great college job.
So you were raised in Pedro. I mean, you're truly a Pedro boy.
Oh, we don't...
You grew up, you still live there, your family raised there.
Yeah, we don't leave that place. And if folks leave, they find themselves coming back.
Yeah, I always find myself talking to people about Los Angeles and I say it's kind of broken into three areas with the west side, the valley and Pedro. And they're all their own unique cities in a sense.
The smallest, biggest town in LA.
Oh, for sure. What, uh... So I've known you a while, I know you to be a stand-up guy and a police officer.
Thanks, Marshall.
But what made you choose that line of work? I mean, you didn't say anything about any family members that were cops. What led you to law?
Yeah, just going back to my upbringing, Marshall. It's, my parents instilled in me the importance of faith, of family, of service, service above self. And I almost became a teacher. But it was at that park where I had my first job and my first adult job, where I was recruited there by my mentor today, Pat Gannon, who at the time was, as you know, was a sergeant at Harbor Station. And he saw how I was officiating, I was umpiring an adult softball game. And there is, you know, start of the game, you know, as the umpire, have a good game, no profanity, you will be thrown out, this is a family environment. And sure enough, one guy was not happy with the call that I made and he cursed me out.
Hey, boo!
Yeah. F you! Sure enough, threw him out, ejected him. And sure enough, Pat Gannon was on the opposing team and this guy came up to my face and I was calm, collected, you just gotta go, you just gotta ejected. So Pat comes up to me after that game, he goes, "You handled yourself well and you're a community guy. We need to recruit you and hire you at the LAPD." I go, "Pat, never thought about being a police officer, but I mean, love to learn more and explore." And he took me on a number of ride-alongs, arranged a few others in other parts of the city and I was hooked. I was hooked. I felt that if I can leave a mark by protecting and serving the people of Los Angeles, count me in. And the fact that LAPD had so many different opportunities and assignments, but I remember telling myself, if I was to be an LAPD officer, I want to come back home and patrol my own hometown. And that's what I did.
And you became a senior lead officer in that same community.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we need more of that, I think, in law enforcement.
Oh, for sure. I mean, that's truly community-based policing.
Yes, absolutely.
We've gotten away from that, I think, across the country, not just in LA.
Yes. Well, they thought I was crazy when, "Are you sure you want to go back to your hometown? You're gonna arrest your best friends?" They go, "No, my best friends abide by the law. They're good guys." But it was the fact that, you know, folks came up to me when I was playing at the park with my kids, when I was at the grocery line, grocery store line. And I wanted that, even though, you know, as officers, we're never off duty. But to have that sense of trust and confidence and have people come to you with quality of life concerns is very rewarding and to be able to solve the most pressing problems in my own community that I was raising my family. My wife's a teacher at the time, we're raising our kids. I was a senior lead officer in the basic car area that I was born and raised and live in. The most rewarding, most rewarding assignment I've had in the 15 years.
So from that, at what point did you say, "You know what? I could do more as a politician"?
Yeah, Janice Hawn went off to Congress and at the time, I was already like eight years into a senior lead officer. And some of the times, as you know, in law enforcement, in police work, in LAPD, you gotta draft a 15-2 in order to get something done or to make a request. And for me, there was times where I was frustrated when, you know, a local gang was taking over a neighborhood and because of, there was no lighting on the block or a tree was overgrown to the point where there's a lot of dope transactions and such. There's potholes that need to be filled when I was responding to 911 calls. And I felt like, no, I know the quality of life issues, right? And I know what needs to be done in order to prevent crime. And I also was in the forefront of putting bad guys in jail who were preying among the most vulnerable. So I said, when there was an opportunity to run for city council and Janice Hawn went off to Congress, it's like, "I got a shot. Let me just look at it." I was being encouraged by my neighborhood watch groups, my business watch groups, family members. But they told me, "Marshall, I don't know if a cop can get elected. I don't know if a police officer can get elected to city council." I was up against a political establishment, a respected assembly member, Warren Furretani.
Yep.
I was up against a lot of money, a lot of special interests. And I was just a local guy, wanting to do good, wanting to improve the quality of life. And sure enough, I got elected. And we're talking about the same issues today in LA.
Yeah, we're talking about the same issues today. Well, I mean, you're one of 15 council members and an independent mayor, which is, you know, is there, is there any other city that has a full-time city council?
I believe New York, Chicago, some of the bigger cities, yeah. But as I say, I come at this in the mindset of public safety first.
Right.
And you may have seen some of the work that I've done in the city council. Oftentimes, my colleagues don't agree with me based on my lived experiences as a police officer. But we have solved problems based on, you know, our on-the-ground solutions. I don't need a, I told my colleagues, I don't need a poll or I don't need a report back to know what's happening on the streets.
No, I need a report back.
Oh, the worst.
Yeah, I think I know this answer, but I'll ask it anyway. What guides you? What's your North Star?
My North Star is just having the ability to make a difference, just wanting to do good. You know, going back to my upbringing, my faith, my faith in God has led me to wanting to improve the lives of others and, you know, going back to, you know, wanting to serve others and being effective at it.
Okay. On that same vein there, and I appreciate that answer and I'm glad that you aren't bashful to say that you believe in God because I do too and we share that faith. What, if you could implement or change one law, what would it be? Either change a current one or implement a new one, what would it be and why?
Well, there were times when I was working the streets of LA where I myself, as a police officer, felt handcuffed to not being able to help the most vulnerable, especially those who are suffering from mental illness. We've seen responding to 5150 calls. And I told myself then, it's like, we've got to be able to change the definition of gravely disabled. We cannot wait for people to be on their last dying days before we get them off the streets. It's been so frustrating, even today where we see this. And I was right years ago. And I would change the redefinition of gravely disabled. I would reform these mental health laws that are hurting the most vulnerable out there, who are not in the right mind frame to say yes to help. By moving on more conservatorship, involuntary compliance, but ACLU gets in the way. ACLU will tell you, "No, this is their civil liberties, let them be." And I'm saying, "No, we got to change the law. We can't, we can't allow them to die right before our eyes." So...
ACLU is not the same ACLU. I mean, their interests have changed from what it used to be.
You and I, we respect civil liberties, but when people are not in the right mind frame, where is the compassion, Marshall? Where is the love? It's actually cruel to let people die on our streets who are just not all there. You see them walk in the streets of LA every day. You see on Facebook, on Instagram. And we can't pick these folks up and send them into longer-term care. And the 72-hour hold, as we know, our brothers and sisters out there, that's a joke. It's a joke because we will get them, pick them up as officers and we know damn well, they'll be out within hours.
Right.
And then the next radio call comes out. So...
And it's the same person.
Right.
Understood. What would you say, the biggest misconception about you, Joe Buscayeno, whether that be the man, the politician, the senior lead officer, the reserve, what's the biggest misconception about you?
Well, if you'd followed, I call it Twitter left or Twitter Los Angeles, these advocates who are demanding we give the homeless people the right to lie on public right-of-ways by, you know, they're demanding that we let them be, let them shoot up drugs, let them, you know, cause havoc and chaos in our streets, just let them lie and let them be. I'm saying that they're allowing them, I'm saying they're letting them die without connecting them to services and immediate housing. So the misconception is that I'm not helping the homeless by connecting them to services and moving them into safer locations. You know, Deion Joseph, our brother in service at Skid Row, senior lead officer.
Senior lead officer, Joseph?
Yeah, yeah, it's like, we agree. It's like, you can't let the sidewalk be an anchor when we know there's mental health drug addiction issues. I mean, so the misconception is that I'm sweeping the homeless or moving the homeless from one neighborhood to another. It's a false narrative. In fact, we've housed nearly half of the people on the streets and if you were to come to my district, you're not going to find these large dangerous encampments because we've done both. We've said yes to solutions and we also give them people choices.
Awesome.
It sounds too much balance, doesn't it? Sounds too much sense, right? And something that we've left, we've lost around here.
Got to get Joseph and his brother.
Right.
Get them both on this show.
You ought to. And that's a misconception is Buscayeno is not compassionate. BS. It's like, come to see what we've done and how to do it citywide.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
Sure. Well, hey, you're gonna get a straight shot, a straight shooter over here.
Of course.
I'm coming from the heart.
That's why you're here.
I'm coming from the heart and speaking truth of what's happening.
Let's continue with that. What's your, what's your proudest, either personally or professionally, what's your proudest moment in your life to date?
Proudest moment, oh, my family, my wife and kids. Yeah, they're just incredible and it's hard to, I mean, going back to my days at LAPD, there was shitty hours, we know that. There was just crappy hours at, you know, command posts, being, responding to emergencies and tactical alerts and it was, you know, been blessed to have a supporting wife and kids who value my work and understand what I do and even where I'm at today, these last 10 years as a council member. No different than a police officer, we're just, we're never off duty. 24/7 job. And I'm just blessed to have the support at home and I'm proud of, you know, the young man that my son has become, he's 18 now, and who is focused on his studies and just, he's just a good-hearted kid. And my daughter, who's 15, does very well. I got like the performing artist in my daughter and the artist in my son. And then my rock, my wife is just incredible. You know, we had protests from these so-called advocates in front of our home numerous times. So I was like, they had to go through that and like I had explained to my kids that these people are protesting our own home for connecting people to services and cleaning up our streets. So they've been through a lot, but just proud of the home, the home life. As they say, there's no place like home and having the support, not only from, you know, my wife and kids, but also my family.
When did it become okay to protest at someone's home?
Right. That's another episode.
Yeah, that is definitely, that'd have to be an after-hours one. So no plans at this point for your kids to follow in your footsteps as police officers or politicians?
Um, I don't know.
Would you dissuade them from being cops?
You know, we need good people. I would encourage, I would encourage my kids to be in the field of public service. And we talk about that in our home. My wife's been an educator, a teacher for many years, almost 30 years now. So it's been who we are, the fabric of our household and it's been in our DNA.
Clearly.
Yeah. My nephew, Brandon, God bless him, he works for the CBP, assigned to LAX, really proud of the work that he's doing there and he loves it. He studied criminal justice at Northern Arizona University and AAU and it just makes me proud. Makes me proud.
So what, what would you like your legacy to be?
My legacy? Just knowing that I left a mark in people's lives, just knowing that I improved the quality of life in my years of service. I mean, I've dedicated 30 of my 47 years to the city, from my days at the Wreck and Parks Department to LAPD and as a council member. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think that's all our goal and our legacy is to make sure that you help people and improve folks' quality of life. And I felt that I've done that.
Yeah, unequivocally you've done that.
It's been from Watts down to San Pedro, opportunities there, Jordan Downs and LA Waterfront Project. These are redevelopment of housing projects without displacing souls and bringing economic development, creating opportunities, preserving, protecting public safety. So really proud of that and that's my legacy moving forward.
Good. What makes you happiest in life?
What makes me happiest in life? Just fall back on just my home, my home. When not only, both work and, you know, I've been, balance is very important to me. So at home, just watching my kids thrive and be successful and my wife watching the work that she does in schools throughout South LA. And even at, you know, my work, seeing a dedicated team, just delivering and being committed. My team, 90, 98% of those who started with me in day one are still with me 10 years later.
I've been doing the political thing for a while, that's unheard of.
It's rare, I'm proud of that. So what makes me happy is seeing the fulfillment that they get in serving others.
Okay. So let's get into your background a little bit more. What high school did you go to?
San Pedro High School, home of the mighty Pirates, baby.
Okay. Mighty Pirates, all right. Did you play any sports?
I did, I played baseball. Catcher.
Catcher?
Yeah. Great best position, carry on every pitch, calling the shots.
I saw that little video from the mayoral debate where you rush, rush the heckler, try to rush the stage.
Yeah, the protester rush, yeah. Our police instincts are always, they're always in me.
You kind of rushed up there like a catcher.
Yeah, that too.
That was good while your other competitors just kind of had that deer in the headlights look.
Well, that's symbolic of, as you know, running for mayor, it's symbolic of the mayor I'm gonna be in the city.
Absolutely. Okay. How'd you meet your wife?
We're first cousins. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. My white wife is... My wife is also Italian. And this is how I got elected, you gotta know this. My wife and I, we had 500 people at our wedding. Now, she is also a daughter of Italian immigrants. I'm a son of Italian immigrants. Seriously, we're not related, we checked. So we had 500 people at our wedding and we have known each other growing up in San Pedro. Our parents were involved with the local Italian-American club. We find each other dancing at weddings and, you know, celebrations and such. She was a few years, she's a few years older than I am. And we've always had this connection until I asked her out to a Christmas party.
Okay. How long you been married?
21 years.
21 years.
Yeah. She says barely, but you know.
How long did you date before you got married?
A few years. We've known each other, so it was the best decision of my life.
So it's like 23, 24 years? Because Courtney counts. I tell my wife all that time.
Yeah, it's true, that counts, you're right, you're right.
She gets some brownie points from that.
Her family's been amazing, they've accepted me as their own son. But back to the 500 people at the wedding when I first ran for city council, they asked, they said, "Joe, you gotta raise money." It's like, I've never raised money for anything. So we went to the wedding list, went down one by one, by one. People gave from $5 to $500.
Keep it going.
And that was a, that was a true grassroots campaign.
You have any pets?
I do, I have a French Bulldog.
Name?
Apollo. Yeah. Now, we also had a pug, Rocco. It was like kind of like Rock, Rocco, Rock and Apollo from Rocky Balboa. And we had, we had a pug, a black pug for 12 years and he passed away almost a year ago. Yeah, we still get emotional over his loss.
Fabricated inhaler of a dog.
Yeah, and Apollo's been amazing. He's like a kid.
What's your, what's your favorite place?
My favorite place? They say there's like no place like home and, and as you know, in police work, our safety net is our home base. And just the comfort level.
Let your hair down.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Understood.
Yours as well, you let your hair down.
Absolutely.
We, the, it's like, even like in police work, we, we get MFed all the time, you know, the one finger wave. I dealt with that for many years.
Just say you're number one.
Right, exactly. And then being a council member, going, getting shouted down at community meetings and... But when you walk through that threshold, when you walk through that door, you know, that is your safe place.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's, that's been a blessing all my life, not only growing up at my parents' home, but even our home as well.
So you played baseball as a catcher, so I would expect that you're a baseball fan.
Yes.
What's your favorite sports team?
Dodgers. Los Valles.
You said Giants, I was gonna eschew.
I don't know. My dad, I'll never forget, taking me to my first Dodger game, Wrightfield Pavilion, third row. I mean, I remember seeing the ticket, the face value of the ticket was like $5.50. And then there was one of those games where Tommy Lasorda ran out, ran out of the dugout and like was cursing at the umpire. And then the one observation my dad made at the time was, "You see number two in this thick Italian accent, Tommy Lasorda, he's Italian and that's why we're fans." So I've been a Dodger fan all my life. So Mike Socia is my favorite player. I wore 14 all my life on the field, catcher. And in 1992, I was able to be a part of the San Pedro High School baseball team, the championship team we won on that field at Dodger Stadium, which was really kick ass. Don't forget that.
I got a nephew that would always go and every chance he got to go to Dodger Stadium. And one time he got to go on the ground and his dad, they were able to get Dodger dirt.
Yes. I still have mine 30 years later.
Dodger dirt.
Yes.
All right. Okay, here's the lightning round time. You ready?
Oh, boy.
What's your favorite word?
Yes. Like, as like to get to yes.
And let me, let me just preface this. Is this, this lightning round of these 10 questions, they're actually derived from.
A dating app?
No, the actor studio. Inside the actor studio.
Not a dating app? Okay, gotcha.
And I liked it so much, he actually got it from a, from a French guy. And I, sorry, forgot his name, Bernard Pauvau, I believe it was.
Okay.
But that's where these, these came from. And that's what I kind of liberated them from him. So.
Bring it.
Yes is your favorite word. What's your least favorite word?
No.
Set up for that.
As in the house of no, which is City Hall sometimes and the city attorney's office. Oh.
What turns you on?
What turns me on? Just, um, just being, just positiveness. It's just, yeah, just, I mean, people get skeptical at times, which.
I get it.
I'm sure that may be the next question which turns me off is people who are just, what turns me off is like, yeah, it's bitter, just bitterness. And people who are litter and graffiti.
What sound or noise do you love?
Ocean sounds, rain. There's an app for that, right?
There is. There is. What sound or noise do you hate?
Gas.
What kind of gas?
Human gas. Oh, just, what's, you know, oh, when, you know, when you're eating. And I do this all the time. I piss off my wife when I'm eating. I go, when the fork, when, when the fork hits her teeth and it's like, ah, and chills.
Got it. Like chalkboard.
Yeah. I do that all the time, too.
What's your favorite curse word?
I could drop an F-bomb, but I prefer not to say it, but fuck, I could tell you the, or like a, like a fuck, like a fuck. Like one of those soft F-bombs, like, ugh, fuck.
Got it. See, Tommy Lasorda.
Yeah, exactly.
He'd give you a whole treasure trove.
F-bomb here and there.
What profession, other than your own, would you like to attempt?
Oh, um, I've always wanted to be a weatherman.
Really?
Yeah, going back is like, I mean, I, before school, I was like, I would be in front of the TV to see what the weather would be like.
I could see that.
And, yeah, in fact, I just met for the first time Dallas Rains. It was on the ABC with Mark Brown the other day.
Shiny suits.
And that was, that was a highlight for me.
So what would your weatherman name be?
Oh, hold on. Oh, yeah.
You gotta have a name. If you've thought about this long.
I haven't thought about that. No. But let me tell you this.
Blizzard Buscayeno.
Blizzard, there you go. Well, let me tell you, the seven-day forecast calls for mid-70s coming up in the weekend forecast. We did experience an Arctic cold come from Alaska and.
You practice this too much. All right.
Expect highs in the 70s today.
You got some shiny suits too, like Dallas?
I do, I do.
All right. What, what profession would you like to participate, you said that, what profession would you not like to participate in? And you can't say politician.
I know, but there's, I think there's no profession or that's beneath me.
That's you absolutely would not want to do.
Oh, God. There's just a lot of good people out there doing good work.
But there's gotta be one, you'd be like, I don't want to do that. Like at the airport, you see the lab truck driving by, you know, I wouldn't want that job to clean out lavatories. I mean, someone's gotta do it, but that's not a job I'd want to do.
So although I respect the workforce, I would just, any profession that would like, put me in, in my older age, as I'm getting older, claustrophobic, I'm just, I'm getting more claustrophobic than ever for some reason. So any profession that gets me in a tight box or a tight space, I wouldn't be able to.
Okay. All right. And last one, rounded up. Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta add one. My oldest daughter asked me to ask this question. What's your favorite dad joke?
My favorite dad joke?
You're a dad, so I know you got one.
Oh, I do the knock-knock joke. Knock-knock.
Who's there?
Boo.
Boo.
Why are you scared? It's only a knock-knock joke. Or why are you crying? It's only a knock-knock.
That's pretty bad, but okay. That's a good one. So there it is. And to wrap it all up, if heaven exists, which I believe it does, if heaven exists, what would you like to hear God say when you arrive at the pearly gates?
Welcome.
Thank you so much for joining us. Appreciate your time.